Good evening, we will call order the business meeting of October tenth. Sarah, please call the roll.
Allen, here.
Ricky, in.
Still here.
Ross.
Here.
Romanski.
Here.
Swanson.
Good evening.
Tucker.
Here.
Ed Bowerman.
Yes ma'am, thank you Sarah.
You're welcome.
Alright, we're gonna begin with actually good news, as we like to do. We've got a couple items and we have actually a video to show it. Okay? In terms of good news, you may have seen this article in the, I think it came to the SC online, maybe even the print edition as well, but we have congratulations to offer seven of our high school students who are named men's students in the 2017 National Merit Scholarship Program, which is fantastic. Men's students, meaning that they place among the top five percent or more of more than 1.6 million students who are in the program in 2017, so that's fantastic. The seven students are, and any mispronunciations are all in me, Colin Bain, Solani Deisi, Alyssa Jenke, Thomas Coker, I know him as Tommy Coker, I've known him since he was a little kid. Good job Tommy. Gavin Menne, Carly Peterson, and Alexander Weber. So congratulations to those seven students for their outstanding accomplishment, that's wonderful. Second item is, we want to recognize something that's happened, but for the sake of the business meeting, the Shockley Alumni Association had their induction of 2016 Hall of Fame Ceremony on September 30th, and this year's inductees are, we have two distinguished alumni inductees, Bill Wormerskirchen from class of sixty-three, and Kurt Kasolki, class eighty-three. Go class eighty-three. We had three athletic inductees, Kevin.
Chili.
Mendon, class of eighty-seven. Sarah was Anderson, now Fessler, ninety-five. Kelly was Amundson, and now Tippi, class of ninety-seven. So congratulations to all of those inductees, that's great being the inductees here. And our last item, this is where the video comes into play, so our communications team have Ashley sitting up here with us, and the high school put together informational video about the upcoming Practice ACT. The date for eleventh grade high school students to take this is on April nineteenth, 2017. So in an effort to help students prepare for this official administration of the ACT, the high school is gonna run a Practice ACT for all tenth and eleventh graders on Tuesday, October, Tuesday, October eleventh of this year. So I'm gonna play a video that highlights that.
College readiness day is data that we're taking out of our normal school day to help students care for their future, and it will be looking different for each grade. Our teenagers will be taking their ACT tests through a system called NowYes, where it's an online test, it's a full test, it's twenty fifteen questions, that when they finish they'll have instant feedback and be able to identify whether their own areas are. Our eleventh graders will be taking a recital, twenty fifteen sixteen ACT test, that will kind of be where they'll allow them to be able to now only take the full test to get experience in the test environment, along with being able to, for ten days after the test, be able to get personalized, individualized feedback to their own score from the first team. So our twelfth graders will not be testing, they will be going through a workshop. The whole day is around kind of their planning for the end of their high school career into kind of their full secondary plans, going through things around graduation to, you know, students who will be ready to the job market, looking at job applications and interviews, to college apps and financial aid help, it will be a day that helps for their needs wherever they are, to help them have a successful future.
Has Shockley High School ever done a career in college readiness day?
We've done a test prep in the past, past years, and this year we just amped it up a little bit to make sure that we're ensuring, ensuring all students are able to access course resources, provide materials to them, for every student to have a successful future. Students, parents, and gardeners can all find information in your inbox, as well as information on the website for specific agendas for each grade.
Great, glad they're here for students, nice job by the communications team, putting that information together, appreciate that. Alright, let's move on with the agenda. Do we have any known changes to the agenda business meeting?
No.
Okay, so I'm looking for motion to accept the agenda as presented.
It's moved.
Thank you Matt, second. Second, thank you Tony. Any additional discussion on that? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes. Do we have any visitors tonight? We'll recognize anyone that wants to speak, seeing none? Did I skip something? No, I went ahead and skipped that. Now we gotta consent. Let's move to consent, there's no changes to that, right? Alright, so I'll take a motion for consent.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you Angela, second.
Great.
Thank you Scott. Any discussion, questions, comments on consent? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes, we have our consent. And unless there's a reason to change your order, just stick with your order. Okay, so Nancy, you're gonna come back up?
Yeah.
And the first item is picking up on actually one of the topics that was at the last learning session, graduation requirements, and we're looking to take action tonight to approve looking ahead for planning purposes, the high school graduation requirements.
So Sarah, I'm gonna ask that you...
Sure.
So we actually realized in our cabinet meeting this morning that I had made a math error, so I apologize. So there's a revised version that I wanna make sure that you looked at if you haven't already.
You're a central studies teacher.
Yes, thank you Reggie. And so what happened at the learning session, just to kinda help everyone to remember kinda what, is that there was some extended discussion about financial literacy, the original thinking on the part of the cabinet in high school administration is that that could be embedded in the freshman seminar class, so there was quite a bit of discussion about whether that would be sufficient enough, and then also there was some discussion about what does it mean to require a program of study, a three-course sequence. We talked a little bit about how that would play out in terms of, you have that handout on the academies, how kids would pick a program of study and what it would take to complete that. We also talked about the new master schedule, which is assumed in this graduation requirement document that it would be a block schedule and eight by two, which would allow us to have sixteen periods offered every year for a total of sixty-four periods, grades nine through twelve. And then there was a lot of discussion, especially towards the end, about being cautious about changing too much with graduation requirements in terms of not wanting to create a problem where maybe more kids would have trouble graduating, whether it was too rigorous, some of that conversation came up in the learning session too. So we, we made some adjustments based on your feedback, and I just wanna make sure that those are clear. So when you look at it now, what you can see we have done is starting in your left side, you see the class of 2017 eighteen, you can see there's no changes in the current graduation requirements. And then as you go over, starting with that senior class in the fall of 2018, so they graduate in 2019, you can see we've added two elective credits as requirements, but that the difference of minimum to graduate versus possible credits, it's fifty out of fifty-eight. With the eleventh grade, who will graduate in 2020, but they'll be eleventh graders in the fall of 2018, the elective requirement goes up to nineteen, and then you can see that's fifty-two out of sixty, so still a difference of eight there. And then if you go to the tenth graders in the fall of eighteen, or the class of 2021, we actually feel like they will have ample opportunity to complete one program of study, so that becomes part of their new required, stay with the same number of elective credits. And now you can see, this is where we made a little shift, fifty-five out of sixty-two, so we narrowed that gap a little bit to seven, and, but we had had it at six. And then in listening to all of you talk, we decided, when we did talk with other districts in the metro who were out of block and large schools like Boisette and Eden Prairie, we happen to have high school administrators who just came from there, they were somewhere in that range of six or seven, so we kinda backed off and went to seven. And then you can see the freshman class in the fall of 2018, that they graduate in 2022, you can see the freshman seminar is required, financial literacy is required, we see that as probably a junior/senior class, and that's about as far as we've gotten in our thinking. Three-course sequence of a program of study, nineteen requirements for electives, for a total of fifty-seven out of sixty-four, which is a difference of seven. What that means is, is out of possible periods, we'll have definitely lots of kids that'll use all sixty-four periods, but there's, you never require the full amount of possible periods to allow for things like study hall or open periods or credit recovery, that kind of thing. You know, all high schools have some amount of discrepancy, and so we landed on a discrepancy of seven, seemed to be the right spot. So questions about that?
Particularly pleased that something happened at my absence?
Well, that's a shocker.
I should leave more often. No, I'm very, very pleased about that financial literacy, I think that's gonna serve our student body very well. Are there any questions? I think you covered this in very detail, this reflects some comments that you guys provided, so thank you Nancy, I will say on behalf of the board, because it looks like you took those comments to heart. Any discussion? So this is what we're gonna march to, you need this to move ahead with implementation.
So yeah, what we would expect is actually, if you approve tonight, we'll actually put it into the registration guide, so that our counselors have plenty of time to work with our middle school kids, you know, and we always wanna make sure that first we do no harm. So some of these, just to be clear as well, if a transfer student would happen to come in, let's say their senior year, we're not gonna ask them to take freshman seminar. You know, we're not gonna probably require them to do a program of study, though often when you transfer, and I know John would say this as a former counselor, a lot of times you may find similar programming, and you can just say, well, we count this, count this, and then we can make it work. So you always have to kinda make sure with transfers that you're kind of looking at how those things play out, if they're not gonna be here all four years.
One thing I would ask you, Nancy, for the benefit of tonight's business meeting, because I don't think others were televised, just for the benefit of anybody watching who heard you say block scheduling, we've not had that in Shockley, I don't believe, ever, in my knowledge?
We did modify it at seventh and eighth grade at the building that was on Tenth Avenue.
So some times ago, just briefly, what does that mean for anybody who hears you say that? So what does that mean for my kids?
So what that means for kids is that it'll be an A/B block, and that means that they'll sign up or register for eight periods per semester, and they'll take, every other day they'll take four classes, so day one, they would take four, and then day two, they would take four, but in something similar to ninety-minute increments. We don't know exactly what the number is yet, because we might have advisory or something like that, but something similar to ninety minutes. And then if it's a year-long class, what it means for kids is that they would ever go to that class every other day for a year, and if it's a semester class, they go to that class every other day for a semester. But it's in a larger chunk of time, so minutes-wise, it works out to be the same amount of time.
Alright, no additional discussion, we're looking for a motion to approve these graduation requirements, beginning implementation 2018 nineteen.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you Sean, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you Mary. Is there any additional discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes. Thank you Mary. Thank you Mary. Alright, Nancy, there we go.
Okay.
Now we're looking for again another item to talk about in the learning session. We're looking to move for approval of the instructional framework for personalized learning.
So when we met at the board learning session two weeks ago, we talked about the content and purpose of the instructional framework, as well as the characteristics of Shockley teacher, and I think what we heard from your feedback is, A, you liked the content, I think you also said though that you'd like to see us work with communications to generate an internal and an external version that could be used. And so what we'd be asking for is approval of the content of the document, and then we'd work with communications to come up with two different versions, and then probably bring that back for your review, but we're looking for you to approve it tonight, so we can get that work started. And just as a reminder, it would be used from a curriculum design point of view, as well as a driver for professional development, and then when you look at the second page, if you wanna scroll up Sarah, that becomes a driver for what's most important to us in terms of hiring and evaluation, and helping our teachers to understand sort of what do we value most in terms of the instructional environment.
Question? I think it looks great, you happy to make that motion? Thank you, wait a second.
Thank you.
Any additional discussion?
Just to clarify that we talked about maybe for the external version, that that'd be a little easier on your hands?
Well, internal too, you said, yeah. Just wanna say they'll use in design for it, so we'll work on that.
Other comments?
If I could just add one, I would really like to thank Dale and the union, because this has totally been a joint effort with a lot of support from our SEA to be a part of this conversation, so.
Can I answer questions? Alright, again, you've digested this before, then we will move to a vote, all those in favor of approving the instructional framework for personalized learning, the items we see in front of ourselves, and in the direction that you're gonna have to make other versions of this, if you will, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes.
Thank you.
Alright, let's move on to item thirteen point three, Scott, I think you're gonna come up? Or you and Mike may make mine, yeah, okay. It's the NSEA master agreement.
We came to agreement with the paraprofessionals, and so I emailed you some VHR updates in terms of the more significant language items that took place during negotiations, and then also the overall percentage of over two years of seven point nine percent. One of the things that I wanted to let you know in terms of wages, it was something this year, our first step, our first grade of prepared professionals, we put a little bit more on that than some of the other grades, just because it's, that's the entry level for our playground supervisors, and trying to stay competitive to get those people that are very hard to find, to come for a couple hours a day to supervise the playground. On the other hand, we also did some additional grades for our tech repairs, very hard to hang on to technology paraprofessionals, in an economy like today, where they go pretty much to the next district or into the private sector if you have any technology skills. So we, they were banding and grading higher in our banding and grading, and so we recognized that with some additional steps to the right on the wage scale to help, it's about ten people I think that are affected by the technology that are part of this paraprofessional agreement. Those are two of the bigger things that took place in terms of wages that I'd like to make you aware of. Other than that, that would be about it. Well, if you, on one of the sheets I gave you, it showed you that for the healthcare, I think that that is something we've been trying to do in all of our groups, and so almost every group now, we've gotten a situation where the first year they've gotten a five percent increase to help with their premiums, the second year, we've worked hard in terms of trying to get people to be a little bit more consumers, I'm trying to say the right word, to be more a consumer of their healthcare and particular plans with deductibles, you'll contribute more towards the higher deductible plans in terms of what the district contributes. So you'll see, we've seen a movement, that some of our employees moving towards those insurance plans. They also get a chance to get a DIBA or health savings account with those higher deductible plans to offset some of those deductibles. That was a big change in the paraprofessional, custodians moved to that, our food service moved to that, teacher moved to it a year ago, or two years ago. So those were, those were the bigger changes.
Any questions? Question, Allen?
Great work.
Yeah, I, you know, hesitate, say this in jacyness, but sometimes it seems like we don't take this for granted, we have such a good relationship with our different groups, and that's a credit to you guys who really marshaled this, and it's wonderful, it's, we don't take it lightly, we don't take it for granted, but it's great. We don't have any questions, Reggie?
And one of the, one of the things, well, this is the district, and I think that's got incredible labor relations, that's very, very positive, and that was before I even got here, but it's work on everybody just to understand the important roles everybody plays, and acknowledge that, because it's a team to raise children, to educate children, it's just not the teachers, it's our food services, it's our cooks, it's our paraprofessionals, it's all one, they value everything.
Absolutely.
Yeah, and I was just having a conversation, somebody had asked me from another district on Friday, you know, what kind of relationship do you guys have with your, with your bargaining groups, and I was happy to say it's actually fantastic, and they were, they were quite surprised. And I said, why, what's yours like? And I heard some interesting feedback, which made me go, you're really blessed that we have such a good relationship, so, yeah, it was fun to, it was fun to speak highly of the group, and through the people. Is this the last?
I have two more, and I have, clerical is a recognized group that we're bargaining with right now, we're pretty close to finishing up that one, and then I've got related services, which is not a bargaining group, but I'm meeting with them just to have dialogue with them, and that's our LPNs and our liaisons, and I'll just be upfront with the board, and have to make, make some movement on our LPNs, to maintain, keeping LPNs, it's one of the hardest groups to get and maintain, especially with the private sector right now for nursing, the strike going on, and the lineup, or holding nurses, and so we're all fighting, and we've had the most things we're gonna be doing now, and we've been fortunate, we've done a few other things, we've tried to recruit nurses, that we've gotten a few, half of them said, but it's been fighting to pull up there.
Great that we can solve one, the pairs are taken care of. Forwarded updates in a few weeks.
Alright, I would look for a motion to approve the master agreement as presented.
So move.
Thank you Matt, second.
Second.
Thank you Tony. Any additional dialogue, question? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes, thank you gentlemen, appreciate it. We'll move on to item fifteen point one, this is the request for additional special ed para. Julie, you have one now?
Sure. It should be pretty short and sweet, what we had, and I've got Michelle's email in front of me, excuse me, because she's been working with East Junior High, but what we had was a new student who'd been, who actually was here with us during the summer for a short amount of time, came to ESY, we knew that if the student appeared, he came back, because he did end up moving away from out of the Texas, and came back again, that we might need to look for some additional support, because currently, it is I in the end during ESY, needed two to one, if not three to one, support during his school day. And at East, we of course looked through the schedules and tried to figure out if we could shift some people around, and I'm gonna kind of read some of those to you, so I can tell you what it says, but she says at the start of the year, they did make staffing changes to the pairs at East, despite a jump of seventeen percent more resource students, so what we did was allocate more to our high need programs, to the center-based programs that have the kids that have more functional needs. And that's our goal anyway, is to take as much adult support out of the resource settings and the general practices as possible for kids to gain independence, so that was a good shift anyway. As well, there was a thirty percent increase in students in our center-based programs, and those are our high need programs, and we did decrease at that time, because we were able to schedule more appropriately. And then she redistributed some pairs into different areas, like I just said. Since the start of the school year, the center-based ECE program has increased by three students, and we still were able to maintain, but with this new kid coming in, there's nowhere else to pull from, and with him needing constant support because of his aggression, and he has some alovement issues, he'll run out of the building, sometimes we can't get him off the bus, sometimes he hides, so just with him coming in, we're needing to ask for some more support for that program, and for, does he want to do it?
Questions for Julie?
I wanna say thank you for helping us understand the dynamics at play, because obviously, all that kind of cookbook behind the scenes, we're not privy to, but I also wanna say thank you, because what you just outlined, I think it's important for folks to recognize that when we do this, we do this from time to time, we don't take it lightly, and it's only after you guys have gone through the exercise to say, wait a second, just before having another headcount, how can we realign resources, what can we do? It sounds like you've been doing that already, given the fact we've had these increases, and now we've reached kind of a critical mass point, where this needs to happen, would that be a fair summation?
That sums it up perfectly.
When, this is a, just a question, when a student moves into the district with these kinds of needs, do they bring funding from the state with them, or are we just expected to meet the needs and figure out how we better?
Well, this particular student, what we do is we have a child count that is submitted by December first of every year, so because he will be here before that happens, we will, yes, give us some funding for him, regardless, and I can even, we'll put this particular position approved under federal dollars, which is a hundred percent reimbursable.
Okay. Any other questions? Alright, thank you very much, let's take, I guess, we're looking for formal approval of this. Alright, then I'll look for motions.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you Angela, second. Thank you Matt. So we'll just move right to the action, all those in favor of formally approving what we need to do, which is the addition of the special ed, paraprofessionals signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes, thank you Julie.
Thank you, we appreciate it as of these.
Alright, we have completed the agenda, let's quickly see if we have any committee reports. Anyone, anyone, do you look at Mary?
That's not my phone. Indian Indian.
Yes.
We reached a agreement with our superintendent, no superintendent, contact, two point five, two point five, two point five, to the two years.
Okay.
Also, he's supposed to be called superintendent, but it's a main thing.
What was he before?
Um, director.
Okay.
So now he's called the superintendent.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. Any additional committee reports you think to report, I'm gonna go around more, but any committee reports? Okay, let's go around more, Angela, anything?
You talked about earlier in the good news, but a great turnout for homecoming, a great time, I got to flip hot dogs for a couple hours in the alumni tent beforehand, fantastic to see a lot of people, including a current board member's brother, trying to fit into his letter jacket from twenty years ago, wouldn't quite fit over his current torso. But great to see so many community members and so many people who love the history here at Shockley, great to meet a lot of fun people.
John?
I'm good.
Okay, Sarah? Ashley?
Second time. Yes, my first day.
You learned good, keep us up, that's good. Angie? Scott? Dave?
Good.
Mike?
Just to update you on the, on the levy the maximum, it's a little bit smaller, twenty-five thousand dollars less than, well, we, we approved the maximum, but it's twenty-five thousand dollars less than what we had previously, so, about two point three five percent instead of two point five, so.
Okay, thank you. The next time, Mike, we will, for the benefit of the public, the next time we will pick this up, is truth and taxation in December?
Truth and taxation, December tenth, first meeting, our meeting, as you say.
Well.
Well, well, sorry. It'll be on their tax notices, six p.m.
Okay. Julie, anything else?
Good.
Nancy?
You know, I just would say we did our first three industry councils last week, I thought it went really well, both with teachers and with the community members, and we have three more this week, and just been very grateful, I would say, for how our community has jumped in and really wants to help us with work, so.
Terrific, like I'm sure, we're Like I'm sure, and recognize all those folks on the ant board for time and effort, and appreciate that. John?
Good.
John? Mary?
The GAVO for the foundation is ten twenty-eight.
Ten twenty-eight?
For the foundation, that supports coverage, southwest, I don't know.
Hold that as that hurt. Okay, ten twenty-eight. Thank you. Scott?
I got nothing.
Right, I had nothing. Right, that's a good. All right. So for the benefit of those listening, you want to know about meetings that could participate in or observe, we have a couple of the industry council meetings that Nancy referred to coming up both tomorrow and the next, actually three of the next three days, arts and communication, engineering, manufacturing, human services. We have a finance committee meeting, we have board business meeting, our next, so we have a gap here, our next board business meeting is November fourteenth, followed by a learning session November twenty-eighth. We have personnel committee meeting in December, we have another board business meeting December twelfth, that's our last one for the year. That's the night, Mike, right, where the truth and taxation will proceed. We have reorg for the board meeting in January ninth, followed by a business meeting, or an end of business meeting. Retreat, everybody's got this on their calendars, January sixteenth, and then just looking into the year a little bit, January twenty-third is another working session. With that, I will take a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Oh, Scott! Do we have a second? I will accept. Second, yeah. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.